I call to order the August 12th meeting of the Shelby Township Plan Commission. I'll call the roll, Commissioner Putros.
Here.
Commissioner Turner.
Here.
Commissioner Pone.
Here.
Mr. Flynn.
Here.
And the chair is here, we have a quorum. Next item is approval of the agenda.
So moved.
Support.
Been moved and supported, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Next is approval of the minutes from the July 22nd meeting.
So moved.
Support.
It's been moved and supported, is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. First item this evening is correspondence from the Babylonia Banquet Hall, and I believe, Julie, you have commented on it?
Yes, Chairman Moffett, the developer of this project would like to change the proposed surface area of the off-site parking into, he would just like to leave it as pea gravel for a short time. We gave him one year, or I would recommend you give him one year, he would only be using that area three times a year, and I'm not adverse to the proposal. I've asked them in lieu to plant more evergreens along the area where the existing condo unit is along the lake.
Okay. Is it three specific times a year they plan to use it?
Correct.
Do we know what they'd still do?
Oh, I don't know the specific, he said, he anticipated no more than three times a year, we don't know.
Okay, alright.
But I would imagine that if it's a problem, we would get complaints of that sort, so.
Okay, alright, is there any discussion? Hearing none, is there a motion?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Turner.
I move to approve the site plan modification for one year to permit a gravel parking area for overflow parking, no more than three times a year. The condition of this approval is good for one year to expire on August 12th, 2020. The applicant must provide the additional landscaping by as proposed on the site plan dated July 25th, 2019.
Is there support?
Support.
Okay, moved by Turner, support by Putros. Is there any questions on the motion? Hearing none, Commissioner Turner?
Yes.
Mr. Putros?
Yes.
Commissioner Pone?
Yes.
Mr. Flynn?
Yes.
And the chair votes yes. Next item is site plan number 19-25, Mark Hammy. We're owning a property at 1312023 Mile Road, is the petitioner here? Okay, if you want to come on up. Name and address, what you're requesting, and reasons for it?
Definitely.
If you have some graphic, yeah, post it up there.
Okay.
Go.
Okay, so yeah, I'm going to be going over the site plans for 1312023 Mile.
Can you speak into the microphone?
Yeah, sure, sorry about that. Going to be going over the site plans.
Name and address?
My name and address?
Yep.
My first name is Rafi, R-A-F-I, last name Hammy, H-A-M-Y, address 49448 West Central Park, Shelby Township, Michigan, 48317. So, going to be going over the site plans, proposal for 1312023 Mile Road, pretty simple site plans with some minor site modifications. Property use will be remaining the same with office building in the front and outdoor storage in the rear. For us, outdoor storage is going to be essentially a parking lot for vehicles to be parked on. The front office building will be used for a Class B car dealership. And there's also, that front office building is existing, and there's another existing storage building in the rear. The storage building in the rear will also be used only for storage, and there'll be no vehicles going in or out of any of the buildings, meaning there'll be no showroom or anything like that. And so, the rear storage building will be used for storage, any and all mechanical service, body repairs, or vehicle cleanups will be used on an off-site location at a registered repair facility we are currently contracted with. And the front asphalt parking lot will be used for customer parking, and our inventory vehicles will be parked in the rear fence portion of the property as marked on the site plans. And all those vehicles are all fenced in with the gate, and no vehicles are visible to the public. And also, they will be parked on the existing gravel surface. And so, that's all existing, going to the proposals we would like to make, there's two main proposals we'd like to add. We'd like to add a LED sign on the existing monument in the front, LED display, and that's to increase the attractive and marketing efficiency for the dealership, and that's also obviously pending approval from the building department for a building permit and electrical permit. And that would be double-sided for both sides of the sign. The next proposal we would like to add is LED floodlights around the building. The floodlight locations are marked on the site plans, there's approximately eight of them, and the type of floodlight we'd like to use is also right there as well, and also attached to the site plans. So it's your typical floodlights, and that's to increase security, and also the visual appeal of the building, and also that would add lighting to the main road as well, slightly, but the area is very dark, so that's the reason for that. So, the areas are marked where the lights would, where would we like to add the lights. I also forgot to mention for the LED display sign, we also had that attached with the dimensions and all that, on how we'd like to configure that sign. So in terms of any proposals we'd like to make, that's pretty much it. And, I mean, I have some notes here on future property improvements we'd like to make down the line, that would be, you know, with new site plans, of course, and stuff like that down the line. And we'd like to eventually add a repair facility on that property in the rear, to service our dealership vehicles, and potentially expand it to servicing vehicles for the general public as well. We'd also potentially look into concrete or asphalt paving the rear parking lot or a portion of it, and also look into adding electric vehicle charging stations as that grows and becomes more of use. But that's all future improvements we'd like to make, so in terms of this site plan, it's really just.
Okay, so you realize we're only addressing what's been submitted?
Gotcha.
Okay.
Sorry, this is my first time doing this.
No, that's fine, I was just saying, that's great that, you know, you have higher ambition.
Yeah, I was told to.
We're really not going to, we're not going to comment on those right now.
Okay, that's fine. Alright, sorry about that.
That's a whole, a whole different set of issues.
Alright.
To the planner, comments.
Mr. Chair, I don't have a problem with outdoor storage of the site being that it was a landscape company previously, and they used it for outdoor storage as well. I think the proposed use is consistent with the master, with our zoning ordinance, and, you know, the vehicles, as he stated, will be parked behind the fence. The, you know, only improvements are going to be to the lighting and the sign, and a separate application will be required for the modification of that sign. And, as you already indicated, that future site improvements will require a site plan.
Mm-hmm, thanks.
To the board, any questions?
Mr. Chairman?
I'm sorry.
Commissioner Putros, I go first.
I do have one question to our planner, did we get a photometric plan for the site, since he's adding new lights?
I believe he's only adding the floodlights, and those would have to be shielded somehow, but no, there isn't, there is not a photometric plan, there isn't anything around there in that area, and it's own light manufacturing as well, so to the.
But it will be shielded?
Yes, it will have to be shielded.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, Commissioner Turner?
Thank you, Mr. Hammy, I was out there yesterday, you mentioned that the cars will not be parked in front, and they won't be visible to the public, correct?
Yes, we have two vehicles out front, right now, just for advertising purposes, we are not in that building currently, just building promotion, but those will be removed, and they're also parked in a parking spot, but that won't be the case, once we're in there.
Okay, how, I'm just curious, how will the public know what cars you have in your inventory if you don't have a visible area where people can see and select, everything's in the back behind the gate?
Crazy new invention called the internet.
Yeah, we spend tens of thousands a month on advertising, so it's pretty much the way the industry has gone these days, it's all marketing online, and we actually do most of our sales online as well, where people are just signing and leaving with the vehicle, so it makes the process very convenient. And we're also big on the wholesale side of the business, actually more than the retail, so we actually don't have high traffic of retail customers walking into our office, but rather selling vehicles at auctions and to other dealerships at the wholesale level.
Gotcha, thank you.
So the colored plastic flag guys are almost out of business.
Wacky, flatable waving tube men.
After no other questions, I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Turner.
I move to approve site plan number 19-25 for Mark Hammy, Hammy Properties LLC, 1312023 Mile Road, subject to the submission of a revised site plan addressing all department comments.
Support.
Moved by Turner, support by Pone, any questions on the motion? Hearing none, Commissioner Turner?
Yes.
Mr. Pone?
Yes.
Mr. Flynn?
Yes.
Commissioner Putros?
Yes.
Chair votes yes, good luck.
Thank you.
Next item, site plan number 19-28, Trevor Berberick, 213 Design Works. So, name, address?
Absolutely. Address of the site, or my current address? So, address of the site is 55748 Van Dyke Ave., and my first name is Trevor, last name is Berberick.
Okay, and your address?
My address, 21550 Fort Worth, McComb, Michigan, 48044.
So what are you proposing?
We're proposing a mixed-use building to renovate and basically rehabilitate the former Clarkswelding Building on Van Dyke.
Okay.
So, more or less, it's about five units, currently seeking tenants. We do have one primary tenant here today to kind of speak a little bit about the building. Other than that, that's pretty much it.
Okay, so how about you, so what are you going to do to the building? What are you going to do to the building, what are you going to do to the surrounding area?
It'd be easier if I could kind of point it out. Thank you very much. Alright, so as you can kind of see on the lower left of the board, it's the existing Clarkswelding Building, the way it sits. Building was built roughly 1960, it's been kind of neglected over the years, not much has really changed too much. We're looking to basically do a full facelift to the entire structure, more so to appeal to retail, commercial, general office space, totally rehabilitate the site, move parking more so to the back of the property, it's about two acres on the site, I believe just about 1.7 total. We're looking about 100 parking spots to service the whole general building, and front retail, back office space.
So now, the plan noted one was proposing a restaurant, do you have a tenant for that, or is that just a?
It's a possibility, we're seeking space for a restaurant, that's kind of what we've originally planned, but we're still open to kind of accepting tenants.
Okay. Name and address?
Anthony Rubino, I'm of Pilot Property Group, address is 44400 Van Dyke, Sterling Heights, Michigan, 48314. I'm here on behalf of the developer, Van Dyke Shelby Properties LLC, just to speak a little bit too about the tenants and the mix of what we're trying to achieve here. You can see.
Okay, either into the microphone, or you take his, the travel, there you go.
We do have tenants set up already for space A, B, and C here, when you brought up other potential uses, restaurants, we are entertaining the food and beverage area, but we are open to other uses as well, we know the corridor is kind of in high demand right now, but the spaces that we will have available for future tenants are E.D., and we do want to utilize heavily and make a marketing standpoint of the outdoor area that's here, too. We kind of have some. This is just kind of an additional design board showing potential uses, potential design criterias, all the way from the brick, the outdoor area, color schemes, lighting schemes, so just to kind of overall keep into the uses that we'd like to do. Again, food and beverage is what we may pursue, but we're open to other uses as well, so.
Okay.
Sir? Is there any questions specifically about the development that I could answer, or try to answer?
We'll get to that, if that's all your comments. Nicholas, you reviewed this?
Yes.
What did you give us your comments?
The proposed use fits in line with the tenant zoning district, it's a major improvement upon what was in the site previously, as far as light manufacturing and outdoor storage goes. There are a few comments I'd like to address with the site plan itself. I'd like to see the easements indicated with libor and page number, I don't see the right-of-way indicated on the site plan for the road, Van Dyke. And as far as landscaping goes, since there's loading area adjacent to residential area in the east side, we'd require a major one screen, which includes four shrubs per 20 feet, there's 40 required, because I have 36 identified, so I have to bring up those numbers. Also, 60% of the screened trees are required to be evergreen, 50% indicated on site, so one more evergreen tree. And as far as parking lot landscaping goes, we require one tree per every six parking spaces, since there's 99 spaces, six trees per 99 spaces would equal 16 required, there's only 8 identified, so I'll have to adjust that.
Can I ask a good question on that, Colin?
Of course.
Is that just counting trees in the islands?
Other.
Would that be counting trees all around?
You can count other trees, they can only count for one thing though, so it's part of the buffer, as far as the screening goes, they can't count twice.
So it's a separate.
Correct.
Thank you.
No problem. I also want to see the ground cover indicated for the non-paved areas, as well as an irrigation and drainage plan for those areas. We also need a photometric plan, which includes the height, set packs, and design, clearly details for the lighting.
Okay.
And indicate where, you know, a proposal for a ground sign would be on the site plan. You'll have to apply separately for a sign, but I'd like to see it indicated on the site plan.
Absolutely.
And then we'll have to indicate if there is any rooftop equipment, and then we'll have to see how it's screened on the plan.
Okay, they would all be shielded with parapet walls, to completely cover.
So identify that on the plan.
Yep.
And then, a couple of housekeeping things, the east and west elevations, I believe they are incorrectly labeled on the site plan?
Okay, it's, they're labeled as direction they're facing.
Right. So, the top one should be east, that's facing Van Dyke, correct?
Correct, yeah, you're correct.
Okay, so just make sure you correct that?
Absolutely.
So then on that top one, which will be the west elevation, as far as design, kind of break up the monotony of that white industrial-type wall on the north side, I'd like to see maybe a three or four-foot-high continuation of the concrete, or the brick pattern for the frontage.
Okay.
Just.
Requirement then?
Yes.
We'll look into it.
Thank you. And that ends my comments.
Okay.
When you bring up that comment, I was. Specifically on the west wall here?
Correct.
Okay.
Since it borders Van Dyke, want to make sure it has a little more variety.
Would you like to see that just on this face, basically for aesthetics on Van Dyke then?
Yes.
Okay, thanks.
So when you resubmit the plans, just make sure that that's reflected along with the plantings and the other comments. Now, you have a valet area, with a little valet shed, it looked like, is that?
Possibility, more so if there's a restaurant on site, you know, we'd like to be able to cater to that sort of aesthetic.
So you may or, you may not put that, turn in?
May or may not, it's, you know, it's there in case it's needed, we like to plan for, you know, best-case scenario.
So, I guess then the question is, what's it going to look like if you don't decide you're not going to put a restaurant and you don't need it, is there?
It would be landscaped.
Just let, so like just square it off and landscaped?
From a marketing standpoint, too, if another tenant were to go here, we've investigated maybe furniture operations that may want to, this wouldn't be a bad, you know, area for clients to come in and out of, too, so we don't feel that the turn here would be, even if it's not a food and beverage use, it would still be conducive for other uses.
Okay, so that's, so you're committed to having it there?
Yes.
Alright. You tell, I have to commend you for what you're proposing, we've had a few other submissions that, through the years, that we've sort of held off, thinking we could do, we could probably get a little bit better, even though there was, you know, there was some incentive to try to improve that building, we knew that just the demand would come, and it's happy, again, and I think it probably, I'm the one holdover that saw some of the other things that were proposed, so I appreciate that, I guess our patience was rewarded, too, and what you're proposing, so, thank you. Questions from the board?
I'll give you a motion if you're ready.
Go ahead.
I move to approve site plan 1928, Trevor Berberick, 213 Design Works LLC, for American Bintners, 55748 Van Dyke Parcel, 230703301004, subject to the submission of a revised site plan addressing all the department comments.
Support.
And Mr. Chairman, I would just echo your comments, this is, we love seeing this kind of stuff, so appreciate your investment in Shelby, this looks like it'll be pretty nice.
Yeah, no, it will definitely, you know, help that corridor, so, thank you. With that, any questions on the motion? Hearing none, Commissioner Flynn?
Yes.
Commissioner Pone?
Yes.
Commissioner Turner?
Yes.
Commissioner Putros?
Yes.
Chair votes yes, good luck, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Next item, site plan number 19-19, Mark Kosaki, Kosenki, Concord Properties. Yep, so same, same process, name, address?
Of course, my name is Scott Bell, I'm with Lappam Associates, address is 116 South Third Street, West Branch, Michigan, 48661. I am here today as the designer, civil engineer, creating the site plan for a proposed 4,100 square foot, it'll be a professional office building on Van Dyke Avenue, the property is currently zoned, C2 linear, linear retail, which is a permitted use. This is the outlot, basically, of the new assisted living, the Hampton Manor Project. This site's proposed to have 27 parking spaces, which should meet the requirements for a professional office of that sort, it will have access off of the shared access easement going into the assisted living, so there'll be no new curb cuts on Van Dyke Avenue. We have, you should have in your packet there, the site lighting and photometrics, landscaping, utilities, we've got water and sewer there, the stormwater management is, is part of the original design for the assisted living, the Hampton Manor Project has more than enough capacity in their pond for this parcel, so the stormwater's all going to be directed into, into that basin, stormwater basin in the back of the property that discharges to the county drain. We have a couple things proposed, the sidewalk, we have our dumpster enclosure in the back, kind of shielded from things. With that, I think, basically summarizes our project. Are there any questions?
We'll start with the planner's comments, Julie?
Okay, Mr. Moffett, preliminary review was done on this site plan, so many of those comments that are in your packet are, have already been addressed. The only two items that are outstanding is that sidewalk, it was not on the plan, so we'll need that, the continuation from the Hampton Manor over to Van Dyke, that would cross the property. The same thing, if you have rooftop equipment, it will need to be screened as well, and also we'll need a, yeah, I didn't think so, but I just wanted to make sure. And then also, we'll need a cross-access agreement for that driveway.
Any comments from the board, questions? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman? Move to approve site plan number 19-19 for Mark Kosenek, Concord Projects LLC, parcel number 23-0716426019, west side of Van Dyke, north of 23 Mile Road, subject to the submission or revised site plan addressing all department and engineering comments.
Support.
Moved by Pone, support by Turner, any questions on the motion?
How did they get an engineer out of West Branch?
I did the Hampton Manor Project as well. Also, I already had everything for this site.
He's down here, he's down here on vacation.
Everybody's favorite rest stop on the way up north, yeah.
There are no other questions on the motion?
Relevant questions, right?
Call the roll, Commissioner Pone?
Yes.
Commissioner Turner?
Yes.
Commissioner Flynn?
Yes.
Commissioner Putros?
Yes.
Chair votes yes, good luck.
Thank you very much, have a wonderful evening, folks.
Next item, site plan number 19-29, Darko Ancheski, Hilltop Bar. Who hasn't been thrown out of the Hilltop Bar?
I don't know. My name is Darko Ancheski, 4824 Van Dyke, Shelby, 48317. I come here with my architect to explain for the improvement of the bar.
Okay.
Greg Bono with PEA, we're at 2430 Rochester Court in Troy, just for the record, I'm a civil engineer, not the architect on the project. I can give you a brief overview of the site, so.
Sure.
My client, Mr. Ancheski, has been owning and operating the establishment there for some time now, and it's gotten to a point where he'd like to propose some interior and exterior improvements to his building. And along with that, the existing condition of the parking lot's in rough shape, and so he wants to mill and replace the existing pavement there and re-stripe the lot. So the majority of the project is architecturally related with the facade improvements and things in, on the interior floor plan, but I'm happy to try and answer any questions.
So, I mean, just a, just a general review, so new gable rough elevation, complete elevation, and then you're looking to blow out sort of the entrance on the, on the front. The question, one of the questions, and I'd raised this with our planning staff earlier, the smoking area seems awful close to, almost seems connected to the bar, I mean, is that even legal?
I discussed with the McComb County Health Department today, and their requirements for smoking areas are that it's not enclosed, smoke cannot infiltrate into the building in any way, the door must not, the door to the, or the entryway to the smoking area cannot be located near an entrance, there's also no serving areas, so as it exists on the site plan, that smoking area would not be allowed by the McComb County Health Department.
They can be changed, and just a, no smoking area, they can just.
Okay, I just, so, yeah, I mean, when I noticed that, it seemed, you know, you're putting in a kitchen?
Yes.
And then you're serving food?
Yes.
Okay.
Simple food, bar burger, kind of deal, nothing crazy, nothing big.
Okay, Nicholas, why don't you keep going, your comments?
So the improvements to the site are significantly, it looks much better than what exists there, so bravo for that. However, so when new zoning ordinances are adopted, these existing businesses are grandfathered in, so they can maintain their same standard, you guys have been through quite a few adoptions of new zoning, so. You guys have been through quite a few adoptions of new zoning, so there's quite a few things that we look at when we're trying to bring this up to the code. So bear that in mind while I go through my site plan, a review. So some basic stuff to begin. Indicate all the easements with libor and page numbers. Also, the front setbacks are incorrectly stated on the plan. They should be 105 feet for the building setback and 70 for parking. I believe it's identified as 45 right now.
Well, it's to the center of the road, which is 60 foot right away, so we just did 45 to the...
So 45 plus is 60?
It's the same, yeah.
Just indicate the 105 feet.
Sure.
Also indicate the right-of-way on the site plan. So for that road, it'd be 120 feet. Also, parking spaces cannot be located within 70 feet of the road center line, so there's two spots on the south side that would be eliminated, the ones nearest to the road. And on the topic of parking, spaces by ordinance must be nine feet by 18 feet. They are indicated as nine feet by 17 feet, as is.
Yeah, with a, with a vehicle overhang.
Yes, for the vehicle overhang, the area that it overhangs has to be five feet deep. It is not five feet. It is four and three quarters, I believe.
Okay. That's not a problem. We, the, the existing site is 100% paved. There's zero green space at all, so we were just trying to create a little bit of green space and, as part of the exterior improvement. So I can easily adjust that to 18 feet. That's not a problem.
Sure. And we also need a shared parking agreement with the properties in the north, so we have to submit that. The future patio area is also too close to the road center line, which is Van Dyke, and it encroaches fairly deep into the required front setback. So that area would either have to be relocated or removed.
So the patio can't be within 70 feet of where? The road center line?
Yes. Mostly because there's seating there.
60, so it's basically 10 feet from the right, from the edge of the right-of-way.
It'll go from the road's center line.
Yeah, yeah, so it's 120, it's a 60-foot half width right-of-way to the right-of-way line, so then an additional 10 feet would make 70. So the patio's got to be 10 feet from the right-of-way line, if I'm playing that.
Yes.
That's not a problem.
Okay.
We were kind of dashing it for future...
Of course.
You know, patios are a good business driver for bars, establishments, certainly I'm sure he has intentions, but just with the financial costs of, of what he's proposing with the building itself, he was going to parlay the patio to a future date, but...
Sure. We're just looking forward to ensure everybody's safety as far as patrons and vehicles alike.
Sure.
Next item, if the ground sign is relocated, you have to indicate on the site plan where it's going to be located at?
It stays in the same spot.
It's going to be staying in the same spot? Okay. I also need to see a lighting plan for any outdoor lighting that's going to be on the new building, or the new elevations.
Yeah, we had, we, we had recently added a couple of lights and there were, so the canopy of the building's going to overhang the walkway where the two entrances are, and there's going to be recessed lighting.
Okay, just indicate that on the site plan.
Yeah, I think, well, I got a note here that just says, "Proposed building lighting recessed and overhang to illuminate walkway." And then there were a couple of wall packs on the north elevation that we're just calling out as building mounted lighting.
So you're saying the lights are indicated, the location's indicated on the site plan?
Yeah, yes.
All right, then I'll need details as far as the lights go. Photometric plan, you know?
So you want a photometric plan, or you want cut sheets of the lights we're proposing?
Cut sheets will do.
Okay.
The lights have to be shielded, the ones that are on the building.
But the lights will have to be shielded, the ones that aren't embedded into the overhang?
Sure, sure.
So if you, if you wish to encroach further into the front setback with your patio or your vestibule area, you have to get a variance from the zoning board of appeals.
Okay. Yeah, we'll see. I, I didn't gather that'd be anything we'd be interested in doing.
Okay.
There's, it seems there's going to be enough room there.
As far as the dumpster location goes, it should not be located on angle, and if you make it parallel to the property line, then you'll recover those two parking spaces that are going to be removed due to the 70-foot setback for the road.
Yeah, I had some extra room there to the, right next to the dumpster. There was existing storm sewer there that I was trying to avoid.
Okay.
With the placement of the dumpster, and I tried to keep it behind the building, so even if you're driving down the road, you necessarily don't see it. So we can, we can adjust the location and...
Perfect. And then circulation on the building's going to be limited based on the landscaping area on the north side of the building? So this wouldn't really be an ideal area for loading/unloading, as is. Maybe if you reduce the size of that greenscape area, it'd make a lot more room for trucks to turn around, navigate.
On the north side here? So we were just providing, I mean, he gets a, you know, liquor trucks that are, I mean, it's not a...
It's not a huge volume, yeah, I'm curious, I mean, are you going to, you're not really increasing capacity at all?
No, no.
No, the square footage is basically the same.
Yeah, I mean, the foot, you know, the footprint is exist now, accommodates, yes. I mean, I understand what you're getting at, but...
That's where he currently is taking deliveries from, so.
Okay, that'll do.
Unless, unless you're making a mean hamburger and, you know, they're dropping cows off the butcher.
So with that proposed landscape area next to the loading area, is that going to allow enough circulation for the trucks to navigate there?
Yeah, yeah, they'll, they'll pull forward and back in there and then pull out, pull out through the same drive aisle, the main drive.
Okay, and then as far as aesthetic design goes, much like with the American Ventners Company, we'd like to see a continuation of the stone veneer along the north elevation, the side that faces the pool company. So the front vestibule has that, you know, stone veneer at the bottom, the three or four feet. Can I see that continue along?
No, no, he's talking about on the north elevation, yeah, yeah.
Okay. You're putting all that money into making, you know, the rest of the building look good, at least put a little, put a little extra on the north side, so the folks coming from, from Mr. Flynn's neighborhood will pull right in because it looks so nice.
And with that, my comments on the site plan are over.
Okay. Any, any comments or questions?
I mean, it's going from the Hilltop Bar to the Hilltop Tavern, and you got this fancy new logo. There's some old timers around here that are going to be bumped, but I'm happy.
I do have one comment. Nick, did you ask them to move the trash enclosure by the approach?
I'm sorry, what was that?
The trash enclosure. Did you ask them to move it by the approach where number 14 is? Because that will be visible from Van Dyke.
He asked that we not have it at a 45-degree configuration.
So keep it at same location?
Same location. I just asked that it be parallel to the property line.
It's been a long day, thanks.
Okay, any other questions? Ready?
Yep.
Move to approve site plan 1929, Darko Anceski, Hilltop Bar, soon to be Hilltop Tavern, located at 48214 Van Dyke Avenue, based on the revision of a site plan addressing all department and engineering comments.
Support from an old timer.
So, just so the record, Mr. Turner has been thrown out of that bar. Any questions on the motion?
No comment, yes.
No comments, no questions. Call the roll. Commissioner Flynn?
Yes.
Commissioner Turner?
Yes.
Commissioner Oppone?
Yes.
Commissioner Putros?
Yes.
Chair of the CHS. Good luck and...
Yeah, thank you for your investment. That's, this is, this is good stuff.
Yeah, very good.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, planning directors' report?
We have nothing.
They have nothing. Mr. Putros, you're the closest person to the left.
Uh, meeting adjourned.
Support.
All in favor?
Aye.
We're adjourned.